Okay, I'd like to call the board meeting to order. And first business of order is to elect the officers. And if you look at, in your packet, there's policy towards the end of the packet. Policy BDB and it's Board Officers. Explains the three major, explains responsibilities for the three offices, position, office positions of board members, one being Chairperson, then Vice Chairperson, and Secretary. BDB, the letters BDB are in the right-hand corner, so that you'll be able to... It should be in the stapled packet. Can you guys see it?
Not it. Yep.
In the stapled portion of your packet. Okay, if you'd like to look those over, because we're going to be going through and asking board members if they would accept those responsibilities as that particular position. And this gets you a brief summary of what each of those responsibilities are. The first one that we will be looking at is the Chairperson. And after we get done, if the Chairperson does not mind, whomever that may be, I would like to go over my memo prior to beginning your board meeting. First of all, before we even start that, I'd like to congratulate Brian and welcome Brian. You do have a board member that is absent today, and it's due to a death in the family. So Jasmine's mom just passed away recently, and we hope that her family is holding out one during this sad time. So for your, anyone who would like to nominate to be Chair?
I'd like to nominate Vance Pickering.
Vance, is that something you would take on as responsibility?
I'd be happy to if that's what people are looking for, but I'm also happy to relinquish it if someone else would like to.
Do I have a second? I have a second. Okay. Any other nominations? It's a really fun position.
Yeah.
Okay, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and opposed? All right, Vance, congratulations, and you can move forward to finish your memo.
Okay, do you want to do your memo first?
I can do the memo first, yes. This is considered your organizational meeting, so in your packet we do have some components that you will have to, we're going to review very briefly during your board meeting, some of the policies, just some major processes and procedures that the board follows. Also, you have an ethics policy. There is a copy of the signature page of the ethics policy in your blue folder, but there is also a copy of the policy in the signature page within your stapled packet. So I just wanted to remind you that after we go over that and you read the ethics policy, we do need your signature on that, and that will stay within the SAU. You will also be receiving a copy of the biomass report results at this meeting, and they will be discussed at the next meeting, your April 19 meeting. So bring that report. I just wanted to give it to you today so that you would have time to review it, and that was a biomass grant project that Erin and Mike Donahue did. I do have some, the rest of my memo, I can move forward with the other agenda.
Okay. Before we start, I will accept nominations for Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Matt Manning.
Matt, will you accept that?
Sure.
Can we get a second for Matt?
I'll second.
Any other nominations for Vice Chair? All in favor of Matt Manning as Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And next, accept nominations for Board Secretary?
I nominate Tony.
Tony, will you accept that?
Yes.
Can we get a second for Tony?
A second.
Thanks, Matt. Any other nominations for Board Secretary? Seeing none, all in favor of Tony Drappel for Board Secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Moving on to minutes, Brian, he should probably abstain from the minute votes since he wasn't on the board. We'll start with approval of the regular minutes from the March 8 school board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thanks, Matt. Can we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Tony. Any corrections, comments, additions, people feel need to be made? Seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Next approval of non-public meeting minutes from the March 8 school board meeting.
Make a motion.
Thanks, Matt. Can we get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Tony. All in favor of those, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Next approval of, accept a motion for the approval of the return to public minutes from the March 8 school board meeting.
Make a motion.
Thanks, Matt. Can we get a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Erin. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Next approval of the return to public meeting minutes from January 25th school board meeting. These are minutes that were left out a while back, so they're here now. I'll make a motion. Thanks, Tony. Can we get a second?
A second.
Thanks, Matt. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Was that the return?
That was the return, yep.
So you skipped the, just make sure you did D. Oops. That's our hard word.
Thanks, Matt. So we skipped non-public minutes. Can I get a motion for approval of the non-public minutes from the January 25th school board meeting?
Make a motion.
Who? The man.
That was me.
Thanks, Matt. A second?
Aye.
Thanks, Tony. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And finally, approval of the annual school district meeting minutes from this year's March 25th school district meeting.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Erin.
Yes? I just listed the minutes, the school district meeting minutes. There's also MS 22 that goes along with that that has to be signed by all the board members.
Okay. Are you going to pass that around today?
Yeah.
Okay. Any errors, corrections, comments on those minutes which are also in your packet? Seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Correspondence, the only thing I have is, it's being passed around. Bob has given us a thinking card for the board gift that presented him as retirement party this weekend, so if you haven't seen it yet, that's going around. Thanks a lot, Bob.
Thank you.
Just want to say one more time, thanks for all your years. I think we all appreciate it, and we're going to miss you.
Good.
Yeah.
And thank you to everybody that coordinated that evening.
Yeah, it was amazing.
That was unbelievable, so.
A lot of good Bob Nelson stories.
I didn't have a chance to defend myself.
I'm sure they were all true.
Jimmy, any other correspondence?
The only thing I had, I put in your packet, was the correspondence for trainings that will be coming up for board members. The Hampshire School Boards Association puts on trainings throughout the year, every year, and especially at the beginning of a new year, which is now, for board members. They do put on several. Anytime, and you will be getting emails from the Hampshire School Boards Association as board members as well, but anytime there is an email for training, I do try to put it in the packet, so in case anybody is able to go, they can go. All you have to do is just let the SAU know, and they will register you for the training.
Okay. Thanks, Judy. Next on the agenda is our ethics review. Everyone got, as Judy mentioned in your packet, ethics policy for everyone to sign. If you guys want to sign that tonight, pass it down to me, and then we'll make sure Judy leaves with those tonight.
The actual form is in your blue folder, policy.
Is that one in the folder?
There was one of both sides. Does the policy in the packet, then we put a, just a single signature page in your blue folder, so you don't have to rip it out.
Okay. All right. Guess, we're going to guess, have those, I'll take them. Next, committee assignments. So we generally have, you guys got in your packet a copy of committee assignments, and on the top are the board standing committees. Those are, in a nutshell, those are our committees that are comprised of just us and administration. They're made up of facilities, policy, transportation, negotiations, budget representative, Hampshire School Board Association representative. In order not to have a quorum, those need to be between one and no more than three members per committee. So if you're passionate about something, speak up and we'll get you on it. At the bottom are the school district committees. Those are more or less staff committees, and just so that we can be informed about what's happening in the district, we usually have one member on each of those. I guess it's okay to have more than one, but again, no more than three. And none of these meetings meet that often, a couple times.
No, right, yeah.
Or as needed.
Sometimes once a month, but sometimes every other month and quarterly.
Yep.
Depending on the need.
Yep.
The only committee that will not be meeting this year is your negotiations committee.
Right.
Because the teacher contract has been agreed upon, so that would be out for this year.
And just keep in mind, we have to save a couple spots for Jasmine. She probably didn't, she had so much going on, she probably didn't indicate anything she was interested in. So we need some volunteers for facilities. John, you were on last year.
I'd like to be on facilities.
Matt?
Do you want to join us, Brian?
Sure. I'd like to be on facility as well.
Okay, so we need...
Three. The most you can have is three.
Right. Actually, Brian is passionate about doing it. I'll take a year off.
I think I probably have the most input on that at this point.
Okay.
Where we stand it, you know, since I'm learning all this stuff.
Okay.
At least that's something I'm, got some sort of background in.
Sounds good. Okay.
You know, I don't mind doing policy either. Doesn't matter to me, I was just...
No, that's fine. I have interest in policy as well, so.
Okay. So we have John, Matt, and Brian. I was on last time, I'd love to say.
Yeah, I'd like to make a move to policy.
Any other interest in policy? We've got two. Three is fine. Two is fine. We believe in opening for Jasmine if that's any area of interest. Okay. Transportation, I remember who was on that last time?
John Leach, yeah.
John, do you want to stay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was that just you, John?
Yeah, it was. Somebody wants to join me this time.
No, I think it was me, you, and Mike.
Was it?
Yeah. I don't think we ever met this past year, though. I don't know if we knew that much, though.
So is it just Jonathan this year, or what?
I'll go ahead and do that.
Okay, thanks, Brian. We don't need anyone else for transportation. I think we're good on two. No one for negotiations. We need a, one budget rep. The budget rep is the person who goes to our budget committee. You did it. Okay, you did it last time, right, Erin?
Yeah.
We need a Hampshire School Board Association representative. That has been jaying for the last six years. It's a spot where representatives have to conquer and once in a while advocates for us. It's got to be someone who's flexible and during the day can make the trip down there.
Usually ends up being, I want to say a Saturday.
Oh, it is on a Saturday?
It's when they have their big meeting, annual meeting, where they go through all of the resolutions across the state from boards that have suggested changes
Yeah.
in the laws, and they will have a big meeting in January, and then that's when they vote on all the resolutions and changes that are going to be made.
Okay. Is anyone interested in that? And we can save it and ask Jasmine if no one is. Okay, we'll see if she's interested.
If she's not, all of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So put Erin as a potential. But we go ahead and put Jasmine on policy, and then Jasmine being alternate. Yep. Put Jasmine on policy, and Erin as the alternate on Hampshire School Board. School district committees, we have professional development. Is that quarterly or not even?
When we were developing or revising the professional development plan, that was a monthly meeting. Right now, it tends to be quarterly or bimonthly, depending on the week.
Okay. And just so people know, these committees tend to meet either right before or right after school.
Correct. The professional development, that has been usually right after school, around 2:45, and it lasts approximately in one of the classrooms. Technology's the same, quarterly, depending on the goals of the year. For the most part, technology is quarterly, and that is, again, 2:45 to 3:45 in the classroom.
Risk management is quarterly also.
Yes, and that happens during the day sometimes.
Well, no, it's before or after school.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Which ones are weekly or monthly meetings? Are any of those? I don't think they are, are they?
Probably as needed.
The Coalition for Healthy Communities is just once a month.
Okay.
I'd like to be on professional development.
Okay. So Matt, on professional development. Technology, any interest there?
Yeah, I'd like to continue with that.
And Tony?
Meeting next week.
Risk management.
So if I was doing risk management, I would like to continue with it. I've had, when I first started with it, it was after-school meetings, and I think I emailed everybody that the last two were at 7:00 AM, which makes it very difficult. I mean, if it's going to stay at 7:00 AM, I don't know if someone else could step into that, but I mean, any meeting that's after school, I can definitely make.
You can make?
After school is not a problem. The 7:00 AM is tough in our household.
We can put you down, and then we can have an alternate slot. Do you want to check on that for us?
Sure.
And if we're going to have a time change like we did this year, we can try to get someone else on it. Limwood Coalition for Healthy Communities, that's a monthly meeting. Deb, you said those usually before or after school also?
No, that's usually at 9:00 AM.
It's at 9:00 AM. That's a community meeting.
Yeah.
It's a little difficult to make.
Okay. Anyone here interested or can make those? We can leave and see if Jasmine has any interest. Food service.
I'll stay on that.
Okay, thanks, John. Sick bank, that's...
As needed.
Yeah, I was on this year. We met, but it was the first time in six years. I mean, I'll stay if people...
In that meeting, we usually try to do it like 7:00 in the morning, in case any board members are on their way to work, they could stop by. It's more really like a 15-minute, when there's a need.
Next is wellness. I was on that last couple years. I'm happy to give it up if someone would like it.
I'll do it.
Sarah?
Yeah, we've been meeting after school, I think.
And then emergency management, is that quarterly?
Quarterly, right now, yes.
Okay. Is that before, after school?
We've been meeting at 9:00 during the day.
All right.
But it could be after school, too. It doesn't have to be...
Were you doing that before, Matt?
Sure. I don't remember doing it.
All right.
You may have been on it.
Staff members will be involved in the emergency management, so that will probably be like a 2:30, 2:45.
And so then we can ask Jasmine, we've got her down for...
Yeah, I can do that, too.
Yeah, again, that's a timeframe that I can do, so if it doesn't get filled...
Most of the time, yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks, Matt.
So... I'll go to Jasmine first, and if she doesn't want to turn her, I can do it.
So, Deborah, you taking minutes?
Yeah.
Do you want to...
Yeah.
You guys are going to correspond with Jasmine at some point?
Yes.
If you want to let her know what we've left open for her, if she has interest.
Sure.
Okay. Next is goal-setting meeting date. It usually takes less than an hour, half an hour, right?
We usually do it like the hour, an hour before your board meeting.
Okay.
So I suggest doing it your, your first meeting in May, which is the second, right now, it's the second Wednesday
Okay.
in May. That will give us time to get the goals together and
Okay.
create a packet for you.
May 10.
May 10?
May 10.
May 10.
So you do it at 5:30? 5:30 to 6:30.
Is everyone okay with that? We're going to be here that night anyway for a meeting, potentially?
Makes sense.
Okay. Goal-setting meeting, May 10, 5:30. Staff nominations and resignations, did you have any?
Yes, I do. I have a resignation from Robert Georgia. He was one of the custodians that was recently hired. However, due to family commitments and responsibilities, he had to resign. I recommend that you accept the resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Robert, can you?
Georgia.
Georgia, sorry.
Thanks, Matt. Can we get a second on that?
A second.
Thanks, Tony. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Is that it?
No. You have a resignation for Lauren Luce. She's your graphic arts, teacher slash business marketing person, and she will be resigning at the end of this year, school year, and will not be coming back.
Just declare Robert was immediately.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Lauren Luce, and thanking her for her service at the school.
Thanks, Matt. Can we get a second for that?
I'll second.
Thanks, Erin. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The rest of the nominations, we can, we'd like to go into non-public first, and then we can do, take the vote. The board can take the vote when they come out of non-public.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, thanks. School board calendar was in everyone's packet.
Please, can I interrupt for a moment?
Sure.
I'm sorry. You also have some coaches, and I realize that you don't, there's no nomination for that, but I would like to read through.
Yep, I saw them in the memo.
Coaches, okay. And in your...
They're all returning, right?
Yes, all of these are the same coaches that you had last year. Your middle, your middle school softball head coach is Diane McGrath. Your middle school baseball head coach is Aaron Louts. An assistant is John Perry and Chad Morris. Varsity softball head coach is Andy Kilmer. Assistant coach is Butch Chase. Volunteer assistant is Lynn Tilden and Emma Dougray, and Tom Bentley. Your varsity baseball head coach is Kevin O'Brien. Assistant coach is Dave Bowden. That's it.
Okay, thanks. So school board calendar, that was in your packet. It was in a spreadsheet format. So it's two meetings in May, two in June, one in July, two in August, two in September, two in October, two in November, and then when we get to December, because of the holiday, there's one, but we also have three budget workshop sessions where we, administration presents a budget to us. We invite budget committee, and we kind of go through it with a fine-tooth comb. There are also two of those budget workshops in January, along with two January meetings, again, because of vacation, one in February, and there are two right now for March, one of them being district meeting. So they are, with the exception of this month, they are second and fourth Wednesdays of every month. Any objections or suggestions? We have to vote to approve that calendar?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2017, 2018 school board meeting schedule.
Thanks, Matt. Can we get a second?
A second.
Who was that?
Thanks, Brian. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Rules for non-public session procedures, for effective board meetings, policy discussion. There was a pretty large packet. I don't think we could go through all of them. Yeah, pretty detailed packet with all the policies that tend to go over all of our duties, responsibilities, dos and do-nots. I guess we would suggest every year, even if you're not a new board member, you familiarize yourself with those. Judy, did you have anything to add?
I know that the one thing that comes up sometimes is your chain of command. You know, from being in a small community, you have to be very careful of people who come up to you all the time and share their concerns with you, which is fine, except please state that they have to go through the chain of command, so go to your administration. Go to the, depending on what it is, go to the classroom teacher. The classroom teacher is your first level for any parent to share their concerns, and The classroom teacher is your first level or any parent to share their concerns and then it will go on from there. If any concerns come to the superintendent's office, I immediately ask the community member if they have talked with, if necessary, the classroom teacher and/or administration before an appointment is made. So it's very, very, it's held to highest level for communication. It's very, very important for that because confidentiality can, can play a major role in this. And that, that segues into confidentiality. Confidentiality is what it is, it's, when you have board, when you go into non-public, that is, you know, that information is for board members only and, and not for any public to hear. And sometimes there is a liability with confidentiality getting out, so I just wanna, you know, I will remind you at every non-public meeting, so it won't be anything that, you know, you'll have to remember, but it is very important for confidentiality and the chain of command. Those are the two major lines.
Yeah. I get data on that, just especially, I know many of us have experienced a community member coming to us directly. Sometimes it's difficult for them to feel like they can comfortably go to administration. If that's not something they're comfortable doing, I guess, then maybe you should take it upon yourself to bring it up with Judith. But just reiterate to them that you would encourage them to talk to the staff member or appropriate administrator directly. Sometimes facts and details get lost in translation when it's second, third, or fourth party. And if they can take the first step, it would just better help them. I also think it's more powerful that administrator or teacher hears it from the parent or community member, not from a third-hand report. So, that's it. I think that's it. Mrs. Smith, welcome. Yeah, sorry.
Did I have the school calendar?
Did we? Oh, yeah, school calendar, sorry.
Before you go on to the school calendar, can we go over the manifest policies, the process that we follow?
Yeah, just, just to review with new board member and, and old board members. On a weekly basis, in the SAU, we're either doing payroll checks or we're doing accounts payable checks. And because of the timeliness of some of this, and there's not a meeting every week, we will send out an email to come in to review the checks, to look at the invoices, to look at the time sheets, the record of the hours, so we can get those out because we do have to pay things on time. Our policy states to get, and what happens is the checks go to the treasurer who signs them and sends them out. So we need two signatures to get them to the treasurer, we need a majority of the board to sign off on the manifests at some point. But again, to get the checks out the door, we need, and I did, and if it's on, if it happens to fall on a night that we have a meeting, I will bring the checks like I brought payroll this week. But again, sometimes we don't have, and if you ever have any questions, I mean, definitely come into the SAU if you have time to go through the invoices, to go through any of the reports that are attached. And, and we're always there to answer any questions.
Thanks, Deb. Hey, before we get to Carol, can we just make a note, 'cause I'll forget, can we, for the first policy meeting, can we put BEA to policy? I think we missed it several years ago when we changed, but Tony pointed out that, that policy is a school board meeting policy. I think it still states that we meet on Tuesdays.
Yeah, we noticed that.
So.
We noticed that too, we're putting this together.
Simple change that no one will disagree with, but we should get it, that it's right. Thanks for that, Tony.
Yep.
Judy, anything else before we move on to Carol?
No, fine.
School calendar.
Oh, you don't.
School calendar.
Oh, second time.
It was approved.
Yeah. Good, good, there. It's, it's my first meeting. Alright, school calendar. We're just having to acknowledge that.
Yeah, it was already approved.
It was already approved.
Okay. It is on the agenda.
Yeah, just wanted to include that in the packet to do.
Okay. Alright, now Carol, I promise.
Really, Tony?
Yeah.
So Katie Parrott, the National Honor Society advisor, wanted to thank your school board for being flexible and changing their meeting time. The ceremony was just held next door and she would like to announce the newest members, Lucy Louts, William Lyons, and Abby Sawyer. If you see them, please congratulate them. They will be joining the current members of the society, Gannit Berman, Brianna Chase, Dan O'Connor, and Cassidy Santos. Brenda Vance wanted you to know that she and Faith Clark took 15 AP La members to this year's state leadership conference, which was held in Manchester. They had some winners. Cassidy Santos and Bree Chase received third in hospitality management. Delaney Pickering and Madison Chase received fourth in hospitality management. Kai Good and Charmaine Chow received second in graphic design. Will Lyons received third in computer game and simulation programming. Lucy Louts received fourth place in business communications. Brooke Duchette wanted you to know that they had another successful and enriching year of reading enrichment. We met for three Saturdays in March to read and participate in enriching activities such as cooking, experiments, crafts, and physical activities. The fourth session was sadly an April fool's joke on all of us because we were forced to cancel the session for the first time in eight years due to the weather. We all prepared goodie bags for the students containing all the materials and directions needed to perform activities and crafts that were missed on the last session. Additionally, some teachers have taken time out of their schedules to finish experiments with the students during their planned time and students recess, so students can experience the final activities. We had a great group of 35 students of the following teachers. Sarah Bowden and Rebecca Manning did the kindergarten first grade gardening group. Danielle Marr had the second and third grade snow group. I had the third and fourth grade magic and imagination group. And Bobby Donahue had the fourth and fifth grade sports group. I never knew Bobby was an athlete, but she did phenomenally well. So, thank you for your support of the enrichment program. Mrs. Hood reported that the annual regional young inventor celebration sponsored by Fidelity Investments was held at Southern New Hampshire University on last Sunday. Approximately 200 students in grades K through eight from New Hampshire, Vermont, and Massachusetts were in attendance. Second grader Patrick Duncan and fourth grader Colton Harriman were both in attendance. Colton won the most remarkable, marketable, excuse me, AKA the Shark Tank Award with his Lego scoop. Paula would like to congratulate both the boys, both boys, for a job well done and would also like to thank the administration and board for your continued support of this program. Heather Krill. Mariah Kate won the next round of the Rotary Speech Contest and now moves on to Linden State College on April 29th to tackle speakers from Vermont. Way to go, Mariah. High school students visited Jean's Playhouse today to view Macbeth performed by The Advice to the Players. Thank you for supporting field trips in our schools. The Girls of Summer kicks off their 11th season with a guest speaker from PSU, Abby Good, an American literature professor on April 18th. Grade six through 12 students have been signing up for another great summer of hiking and writing across the White Mountains. Barb Burhoe would like to report, once I scroll down, that freshman Jade Fitzgerald performed with the New Hampshire All-State Women's Choir on Saturday in Concord. It's a tremendous honor to audition and be accepted into the all-state ensembles. Jade had a fantastic experience and was a great representative for Linwood. We would all like to thank all of you for supporting this opportunity. And finally, Lynn Tilden and Nick Nelson would like to report on Adapt, the Dominican Republic trip. After two months of struggling to find the minimum requirement of participants for the trip, they were finally able to fulfill the need. During April vacation, Adapt is teaming up with another local nonprofit organization, the Beatty Foundation? In bringing a handful of students down to the Dominican Republic for this service trip. Once there, students will be working on, in addition to the Beatty School Building, preparing it for their fall edition of 75 kindergartners. The Beatty Foundation has been established in bringing students down to the Dominican Republic for 10 years now and they are excited and confident in this organization to now have the opportunity to collaborate with them. Lynn Tilden will be the lead chaperone on this and will be bringing five students from Linwood. The High School Inspire Group is reporting that this month is Alcohol Awareness Month, so to honor that, they will start a campaign called Project Sticker Shock. This is a campaign that empowers the student to reach out to the community and raise public awareness about underage drinking and youth access to alcohol. Inspire students will be going out to all the local businesses on April 18th and sticker underage drinking awareness stickers will be placed on multi-packs of alcoholic beverages. And that is it.
Thanks, Carol.
Thanks, John.
Carol, any questions for Carol?
It's impressive.
Most report I've had in a long time.
Yeah, that was, that was good, thanks. Community, any comments? Pat?
First of all, welcome, Brian, good luck in the next three years. Don't know, we've never met you, so I don't know. Anyway, as a member of the trustee of the trust funds in Woodstock, you know, we take care of the school trust funds per whatever agreement was done, so that that happens. Citizens Bank is trying to, I just wanted to make you aware of what's going on, trying to get us to go to some sort of electronic transferring system. And I have, I've been barking at it and the, both of us that are on the committee are on the same page with this. We do, gonna make sure, right now, what we do is when Deb needs money, she faxes us a thing that all you guys have approved. I fill out a form, write her a check, fax the form to the bank. Goes into our representative there and she transfers the money by computer. All done. They're trying to get us into a thing where we do it ourselves on the computer. And I'm barking at it right now because of the fact that I wanna make sure that nobody, no one person can go on a computer and take any money out and send it anywhere. Okay, it's not our money, so we have to protect it more than it is ours. So, she's trying to get me to sign a document electronically and I said, I'm not signing anything until I read the new agreement. And just the fact that the old agreement is 10 pages and the new one is 66 makes me think I have to read it. So, until that happens, they can put all the pressure they want. She, she's been putting pressure on me for about a month and a half now and I told her, keep pressuring me, I said, I'm just gonna take the money, go to another bank. I said, I'll do it when we can do it, I will get it. So if you can send me the documents, we'll do all of them and as long as it's in the best interest of the school district, that's, you know, we'll go with it, but we don't want anybody being able to get on their home computer, access an account, and send money someplace. So, don't know how it works yet.
Okay.
Just, like I said, just wanna keep going forward.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Do we, do we have stuff that we need to send to them or does the bank send it?
No, no, that's all through us.
Okay, okay, thanks, Matt. Any other comments? Seeing none, Judith has a couple non-public issues for this evening, so I'll just pull them where we want them on public. Tony?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yep.
John?
That will be based on RSA 91.
Oh, that's right, RSA 91 dash A colon three matters that may adversely affect the reputations of the board members. We will have a vote in return public.
When we return it publicly, we'll be vote correct.
So if you want to stick around for a vote, we'll have a, a vote afterwards. Alright, thank you. Alright, so we just have a couple votes, Judith, you wanna start, start off, please?
Yes, I'd like to nominate your professional personnel as presented for the 1718 school year. 2017-2018 school year.
I'll make the motion to accept the professional personnel nominations as presented for 2017-2018.
Thanks, Matt, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Erin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions?
Abstain.
Thanks, Tony. And Judith, you have one more for us?
Yes, I do, we have, I'd like to nominate your principal of the school district, which is Scott Courier. And he will be beginning his contract, he will begin July 1 of the 1718 school year. He does have a two-year contract.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the nomination of principal Scott Courier's two-year contract beginning school year 2017-2018.
Thanks, Matt, can we get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Tony. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? And we're all set. Accept a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Matt, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Erin, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?